Good evening and welcome to this West Orange Board of Education Public Board Meeting on this November 22nd, 2021. And good evening, Dr. Cascone, fellow members of the board, our student liaisons, and Mrs. Flowers, would you kindly do the honors? Oh, and I call the meeting to a.
Good evening, everyone. Roll call, please. Mrs. Huerta?
Here.
Ms. Merklinger?
Yeah.
Mr. Rothstein?
Here.
Vice President Tony Cliff?
Here.
President Trick Scales?
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public who stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please, for the consideration of the closed and public meeting minutes of November 8th, 2021, which is attachment one?
I'll motion.
Thank you. Was that Miss Huerta? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Vice President Tony Cliff. Any discussion? There being none. Mrs. Flowers, would you please take a vote?
Mrs. Huerta?
Yes.
Ms. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tony Cliff?
Yes.
President Trick Scales?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And my favorite part of the agenda is hearing from our student liaisons, Baharam and Rody Rota. Would you please take the stage?
So, um, this past Saturday, the AFJROTC at West Orange High School held their third ever drill comp, drill competition during this Saturday, during this weekend. They made the best efforts to keep the school, the cadets competing and the service members who were judging safe and COVID free. They had the schools come in during, for their lunches, they had them come in during stagger times. So it limited the amount of people walking in and out of the cafeteria, kept the schools within their own little pods and tried to keep the hallways decongested. So in the sense of safety, they did a pretty well, pretty great job.
This past week, we also had a school spirit week uplifting the LGBTQ community. Last Monday was Rainbow Day where students would wear, would wear rainbow to symbolize their support. Tuesday was Spread Love Day. Wednesday was Black and Purple Day for those who lost their lives to hate crimes. Thursday was Pronouns Day where people actually wore their pronouns around school. And finally, Friday was where pink, light blue, or white uplifting the trans community. It was a very uplifting movement. I saw a lot of kids participating and a lot of them were actually excited that we had something like that. So that was a great activity to take part of. Also, in this last week, with me being captain of New Theta Omega, which is the West Orange High School's girls' step team. We also held our tryouts last week for three days, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And I could say that a lot of girls were also excited. Also, in that same light, we're just excited to be back, both the girls and the boys, and we're thankful for the opportunity that we had. In that same respect, the Laramie Project also happened last week, and I know that a lot of people were excited to have that opportunity, being that we did have a interesting discussion about that before, early on in the year. And from what I heard, there was a lot of great turnout on the backstage crew. Everyone was just excited to be there, and it was just a great community event overall.
And also just last week, the band at West Orange High School, led by the band of directors, held their concert. It was great music, just wonderful to see the students out there practicing their art and it was a wonderful event. Also, the week before was Men's Mental Health Awareness, Awareness Day. In a society where being a man tends to be associated with being stoic and not showing emotions, students wore blue to convey that it's okay to address your mental health issues as a man and follow practices to keep you healthy. So it was very beautiful to see many students around the high school wearing blue shirts to signify that.
And last but not least, the TRY-M Music Honor Society, which I'm also part of, was also inducted last week. I am a new inductee, so it was, it was just great again to see a bunch of students who care about the musicality being honored. And it was also just a sweet event. The the string quartet quintet, my apologies, performed, and the event was led by Mr. Hellier, and it was just nice again to have everyone back together doing normal, regular activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you just tell us a little bit about the TRY-M? Explain what that is for us.
Um, TRY-M is a honor society that consists of students who take music classes averaging above As. So they have to have As in all of their music classes. I personally take an advanced band class in the high school. I've been taking band since I was in elementary school. I play the trombone, so it, it's basically just an honor societies of selective students who have shown great achievement in their classes. And with that, they did receive, we are receiving pins, and we also did get a certificate. And I believe that during graduation, we do receive a cord for that. So it was really, it's a, it's a great event and a great advantage to those who do take music classes.
Yes. Well, congratulations. That's wonderful. And you two never cease to amaze me, or us, I should say, the collective us. Great. So thank you so much. And Dr. Cascone?
Thank you, President Trick Scales. This is our first item. I have a couple other updates, but I'm going to dispense with those until later in the report and just start with a recognition. Before I turn the floor over back over to President Trick Scales, I'd just like to, on my part, welcome Maura Baker, who's here tonight, and her father. Thank you so much for joining us. Another, another opportunity where we can publicly acknowledge and celebrate this, this exceptionally young, a young person in our schools. So just for the community's sake, and I don't want to steal too much of President Trick Scales' thunder here, but, but Maura is the, the representative to the state board, the student representative to the State Board of Education through the Student Government Association. Through her role as that representative, she recently, last month, or is it this month? Still this month, right? Or no, it was school boards, October, okay. Last month was, delivered the keynote address at the New Jersey School Boards Convention. I was privileged to see that. And Maura did us tremendously proud. And as importantly, her, her message and her narrative to this entire organization of school board members was really impactful. And I'm sure will be the first of many cases and occasions where Maura impacts and influences, you know, her society on a much wider level. And she's probably embarrassed that I'm, oh, you're like, keep going. All right, no problem. I know how to do that. But, you know, and that's, that's a tremendous, that's, that's a tremendous accomplishment, particularly at this time, because what really resonated through her message was, you know, these premises of first, of understanding that all students are different, all students bring different challenges and different strengths and different gifts to the table. She spoke to her own personal journey, which I think was really courageous and inspiring. And she really just kind of sent the message that while we all want to be back to normal, and while this year may be more normal than last year, there are still many challenges that our students face. And I think that reminder to those decision makers and policymakers in the School Boards Association was tremendously impactful. She was then, and maybe I'll leave the, the county dinner to, as it was a county boards dinner. But with that, I just want to again congratulate you. It was really my pleasure to work with you and on, you know, helping, you know, just really just reading your speech that you gave at the county dinner and just, just playing a small part in supporting you. That was really exciting for me. So I appreciate being a part of it. And again, congratulations to you, your family, Ms. Connors, for all your support. And with that, I would turn it over to President Trick Scales.
Thank you, Dr. Cascone. So we, Mr. Baker, we all feel like we own part of Maura now, like we take responsibility for her. But in all seriousness, Maura impressed a lot of people when she gave that keynote address. To the extent that Dr. Cascone and I received an email from New Jersey School Boards asking if we might have Maura be present at the Essex County School Boards Association meeting, because there were a few important people coming who wanted to meet Maura and to celebrate her. So in addition to state level officers from New Jersey School Boards, the county school boards officers, we had Lieutenant Governor Sheila Oliver in attendance. We had Acting Commissioner Dr. Angelica Allen McMillan in attendance. We had, and I don't have her name with me, but the New Jersey Teacher of the Year. And so to say that the West Orange Board was proud, Vice President Tony Cliff was in attendance, and Ms. Huerta, and myself, and Ms. Connor, and Mr. Moore, and Dr. Pollens, we were all there claiming Maura. And so, Maura, what I'd like to ask you to do, and we, we haven't prepared you for this, I'm very curious, and I'm sure others are too. What do you do on the State Board of Education as a student liaison? What do you do? Maura Baker?
Thank you. Thank you so much. So on the State Board of Education, pretty much, they have monthly meetings once a month. They're still virtual at this time. But I do get to miss part of school to go to them.
Don't say I'm so excited.
They are the first Wednesday of every month, and I get to write like a five-minute report. I get to pick the topic on just things that are, you know, important to the 1.4 million students in Jersey. I've definitely this year talked a lot about kind of how the students are feeling about, you know, this whole COVID-19 situation and being back in school. So I do give a five-minute report at the beginning of their meetings. I'm like the first thing on the agenda, because, you know, I'm all that. I'm first. And so, yeah, and from there, that was kind of how I got the opportunity to be the keynote speaker. They, at the, at the school, the State Board of Education, I mean, excuse me, initially forwarded me the email from the New Jersey School Boards Association, asking me to do the keynote, which was really great, and I was so honored.
So where do you get, or how do you get input from the 1.4 million?
Um, well, I definitely talk a lot with peers, you know, around school, obviously trying to gather everyone's thoughts. And we actually were speaking, well, I was speaking with the Acting Commissioner about maybe doing like more of a statewide survey, because I definitely want to get more students than just West Orange. Because New Jersey is a huge state with lots of students, and I want to get, you know, more of a widespread opinion. So hopefully that will be coming soon. So I'm definitely in, like I said, in contact with the commissioner about that. So that's great.
Great, great. So don't go anywhere. Stay with.
Okay, perfect.
Like to, I'd like to present.
Thank you so much. Yes. Here, sorry.
And the certificate reads Outstanding Achievement Award Presented to Maura Baker, NJ SBA Conference 2021 Keynote Speaker, Dyslexia Student Advocate, as recognized by West Orange Public School District, West Orange Board of Education, November 22nd, 2021. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Dr. Cascone, it's still on you.
Yes, I'm going to just dispense with the HIV report before I get into, I have some additional updates, but I thought I would conclude with those. As I thought the board might have some, some questions, so just keeping with the continuity. So I do have a number of investigations which took place since the last Board of Education meeting. You can see there are were 10 investigations conducted. And out of those 10, there were just one of the 10 actually were found to meet the criteria for HIV. I did review the executive summaries. You'll, you'll note that there were two, that there are two highlighted, I believe. Yeah. Is that right?
Yeah.
I've just, I'm, you know, you're right. You know what? I'm, I'm causing real problems for you, and I'm off mic. I'm causing feedback. It's a but I do, you know, those, there were, there are two noted actually that are just on my notes here that were highlighted. And I just mentioned that because they were two that I reviewed and ultimately kicked back to the anti-bullying specialist to, with questions and which ultimately revisions were made. So I have reviewed all the findings. I have reviewed all the investigative summaries and am in agreement with the findings as presented by the anti-bullying specialist and anti-bullying coordinator. I'm sorry, there were. Now, what you'll note on this agenda is, you know, just for the clarity of, of kind of procedure, is there are, you'll notice later on the agenda, there are two motions under miscellaneous. One of them is to affirm the HIV reports previously brought to the board at the last board meeting. And the second one is just enter these reports into the record as, as presented. And then they would be placed on the December 6th board meeting for affirmation. Any questions?
Dr. Cascone, I don't recall receiving any HIV at the last board meeting. Sorry, my apologies.
There were, there were, there was a report presented on November 8th.
Okay.
Yep.
My apologies.
That's okay.
I do have a question. Did you say that under miscellaneous, there's an item to?
Under reports, yeah. Sir. So you see the, there's, there are two motions. The first motion is, is the acceptance of this particular report that was presented tonight. And the second motion is for the, the reports that were presented at the November 8th board meeting.
Thank you for clarifying. I misread them as the same, so thank you.
And really what that does is it confirms that the, the communications required under Board Policy Code and Statute were provided, which I can affirm occurred. Now, I should just mention as an additional point of order that the, the parents guardians or caretakers of the students do have, I believe, 120 days to, to continue to request an appeal with the board, should they so choose. So that option remains open to them, should they wish to do that.
Any additional questions?
Okay. So I wanted to take a opportunity. I'm looking. Yeah. Man, that's okay. I was looking to just lean it up there, but that's all right. So I wanted to provide the, the community with some updates with, with regard to just public health and, and COVID-19 in our schools and how, how we're doing with managing that. So since September, the district has had 109 cases of COVID-19 reported. 28 of those were in the month of September, 33 in the month of October, and 48 in the month of November. This represents approximately 1.6% of our total student body has been confirmed positive. 1.6% of the student body has been confirmed positive over the course of the last three months. The West Orange Department of Health reports that 87% of children residing in the district between the ages of 12 and 17 have received at least one dose of the vaccine, and 93% of individuals between 17 and 29 have received at least one dose of the vaccine. They do not currently have data on five to 11-year-old children, as that has relatively recently been made available. We did, information was shared with the district relative to the availability of the pediatric vaccine through the county. And that is available for families at the county vaccination and testing site at the Kmart location, the site of the old Kmart. I have been in conversation with Mr. Fonzino, Michael Fonzino, from the Department of Health. They are interested in, in organizing some pop-up clinics, and we will be looking to assist them with that in the new year, to provide those parents who wish to have their, their elementary age children vaccinated, the opportunity to do that. Relative to staff, our, our present records indicate that we have over 80%, approximately 80% of approximately 80% of the staff, the district staff fully vaccinated. The remaining 20% are being tested on a weekly basis with a PCR test. And that number does include, and it's somewhere in the neighborhood of four, little over 1,400 employees. That does include substitutes and out of district employees, you know, i.e. coaches who don't work in the district, but serve as coaches. That's also volunteers. The district has made, has had a preliminary onboarding meeting with Concentric by Ginkgo. It's a great name, isn't it? Catchy. This is the testing provider that was assigned to us by the state for, to deliver the, what they call the end-to-end student testing program. Right now, I'm in the process of working to complete that intake form with the testing provider. But more, in a more complicated fashion, really circling back with principles and really working through them, the logistics of how to make this happen. And what do I mean by that? Well, the, the testing provider does in fact do the majority of the lifting on this. Let's call it 80% of the lift. The other 20% of that lift falls to the district. And what does that include? Well, for one, it includes overseeing the opt-in enrollment of, of students and that, and that it is an opt-in program. This is not a mandatory, cannot be a mandatory testing program for students to be opt-in. It is identifying the cohorts in each building who will be tested on any given day. Arranging for a location in the school for that testing to happen. Providing for the supervision of that testing location while the, the people come in to do the testing. And then managing those cohorts moving forward as additional people either drop in or drop out of that cohort. I would be disingenuous if I told you that the, that, that the logistic lift of doing that is going to be challenging. The, the, the most logical designee in the building who would work to do that would be our school nurses. And our school nurses are, are, I, I can't begin to explain to you how busy our school nurses on our daily basis. Here at the high school, typically we have two school nurses here on a daily basis for a building of, what, two, over 2,000 students. And obviously in our elementary schools, one school nurse for as many as 500 students. So we have to, you know, we, we have to put a critical eye in, in how we can move this forward in a way that we're going to be able to sustain. And where we're not going to move beyond really the, the critical mass, if you will, of what our existing resources can do. And that's sort of where we are right now. But I think the, the good news is, is that notwithstanding not having a sort of a, a formal opt-in testing program. You know, I think that our overall case rate over the course of three months, you know, considering the fact that we bring 8,000 people into our buildings on a daily basis has been pretty successful. And I think that has a lot to do with the safety of the school environment and the adherence to the safety protocols which we have in place. Just to shift gears a little bit from physical health to mental health and mental wellness. As stated, you know, several board meetings back, I recognized that we needed to be more strategic and systemic in the way we were supporting people's mental health needs. And that goes for staff, that goes for students, that goes for our families. In, on November 10th, we started the first of a three-part parent communication webinar entitled Establishing Connections. The next one will happen on January 18th, Engaging in Communication. And third, in March, Embracing Collaboration. These are not the only parent workshops we're offering. Our Director of Student Counseling Services, Cheryl Butler, is also working with Rutgers Health University Behavioral Healthcare, offering one-hour parent trainings, helping support children with coping, identifying stressors such as increased anxiety, decreased motivation and social isolation. And that, that is, the date is TBD on that. Also, a workshop called Imagine, which is parent training on supporting children coping with loss. Parents will learn to support their child when they encounter loss and help their child learn the skills needed to cope with any type of loss. This is a 60-minute virtual session, both in English and Spanish, which will take place on January 13th. And of course, I'll be sure to keep the community updated as these events go closer. Now, when I speak of loss, it's not simply loss of, say, a loved one, although it certainly could be that. But the loss of friends, the loss of freedom, the loss of, of, of socialization. Right? Any, any type of loss which someone may have encountered over the course of the last two years. And we know that there are various manifestations of that. What I would also ask the, the staff to, to take a look at is on our district website, right at the top of the website, the various options, there's a link that is entitled Social Emotional Learning. And I, and I encourage you, whether you're a student, a parent, a staff member, to take a look at the, kind of the clearinghouse of resources that are, at our student counseling department has, has assembled for our, our community. And in an upcoming update, I'll, for convenience of our community, I will link that so people can have an opportunity to go in. It really is a veritable trove, President Trick scales of helpful resources. Um, the Emergency Communication Fund. This is something that we had mentioned a number of months back, which was federal funding that was being afforded to districts to purchase digital devices. In this, our case Chromebooks, that we could provide to students who did not have access to a device at home. I want to thank our business office. I want to thank Mr. Santiago and our technology office for great work with this. We have received official funding of $1,467,584.92. With that funding, we have already put in the order for 1,552 Chromebooks. Those are en route. And we are working with the ESL and World Languages Department to further identify any students for whom the survey might not have reached, who may not have had access to make sure that we're getting those 1,500-plus Chromebooks out to the students and the families that need them most. So that will be a huge, huge step to, to really closing that digital divide. And in the off chance that we do have to close a school, you know, knock wood that we don't have to do that. But if we do, and particularly on the elementary level, that we can ensure that students have access to devices at home while virtual learning is occurring. Of course, now we do get them in cases of quarantine. But in the event we had to close a school quickly, say, the same day, this ensures that students have those devices at home. The final update, just to some work that's ongoing, is the District Security Project. The district is currently in the last phase of security work to be compliant with Alyssa's Law. Alyssa's Law defines a panic alarm as a silent security signal, system signal generated by a life-threatening or emergency situation. So all schools are equipped with panic alarms in the main office as well as administrative offices, in addition to strobe lights placed in various stores in the buildings, et cetera. This system will be connected directly to the West Orange Police Department, who will receive and respond as soon as an emergency alarm is triggered. So we were able to move forward with this work, again, due to grant funds which we received from the state. Also part of this, big part of this project, and just a final point, is that all of our, our mantraps are now completed. All of our schools are equipped with mantraps with two-way communication and video. And the final piece of that puzzle will be to finally outfit all of our schools with the visit, the Raptor Visitor Management ID system, which is currently in use at the high school and the middle schools, but now will be extended into the elementary schools as well. And this will essentially, you know, necessitate that, you know, that ID is presented and enables us to understand whether we have a potential, you know, you know, perhaps someone that's on the the sex offender list or something of that nature will flag them in the system. So it, it really goes a long way to ensure that, you know, our visitors are being vetted before they come into our facilities. So, you know, I mentioned that. I mean, I could go on and on and on for hours about all the things that are going on. But these were just a few things that perhaps in the last several months I haven't circled back to. But I think it speaks to not only the safety with which our buildings are operating, but also some of the initiatives that we've been able to continue to move forward. Not in, not, not, I should say, in spite of what I would say is really a, a, a significant rigor. A significant rigor that's associated with, with operating our buildings on a daily basis. And I really just think that, that bears mentioning. I know the students feel it from the standpoint of the rigor that's associated with, 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 with being students nowadays, right? It always had its challenges and now there are some additional challenges that are layered on. And the same thing goes for us as an organization and the people who are staffing our schools. There's a level of rigor that's associated with just be, being open, executing our primary mission of teaching and learning and doing it safely. But we're not resting upon our laurels, Vice President Tonclef. We are continuing to strive to move initiatives forward. We understood that last year, we were, you know, we were sort of in largely in a standstill from an initiative standpoint. So we know we can, we got to get off the beach. And, and we are doing that. But understand that it is, it is, it is a rigor that's associated with what we're doing on a daily basis. And I would be remiss, President Trick scales, if I did not just close in really just thanking and commending all the members of our community, including our outstanding young folks. Okay. Because I've had the pleasure of attending a number of events. And I've been blown away, blown away by what I'm seeing from our kids. So I commend our students and obviously our families who we know continue to help support our young folks. And last but not least, our staff who are working very hard on a daily basis to keep moving the ball forward. And that, President Trick scales, is my report.
Thank you, Dr. Kaskone. And, and I personally thank you for some of those items that I, I thought the board and the community would be quite interested in. And so I'm just going to ask you if you would give us coming attractions for the next board meeting. We were going to talk about Esser.
Yeah. So, thank you. So at the next board meeting, we have a couple of things cooking. We have our, our director and assistant director of Buildings and Grounds, who are going to be coming to really do a comprehensive presentation on, on, on projects, work that's been completed as well as kind of what's on, on the horizon from a long-range facilities plan. And we will have, be able to present some, you know, present updated information with regard to the allocations for the most recent Esser Grant or Esser III or the American Rescue Plan. What, you may recall that we, we presented a preliminary set of allocations back in late June when we submitted our Safe Return Plan to the state. But the final consolidated Esser III grant is not actually due till November 24th, which was great news. Because when we developed that grant in June, we were sort of developing in a vacuum. We hadn't opened. We didn't really understand some of those practical things we were going to need. And so by being open for several months and really learning what our needs were, it enabled us to really be able to refine that grant and get a lot of mileage out of $8 million. Nevertheless, December 6th will provide some information on that.
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And now let's see if the, if our liaisons have questions based on Dr. Kaskone's report. And then we'll work our way around. Any questions, Bahram or?
Yeah, just real quick, for the end-to-end student program. That's the COVID testing program, right? So do you have an idea of how that'll be fully conducted? Like, and I know it's going to be a logistical challenge, but how do we conduct it? Like, would there be like days where students could go, go onto the parking lot to get tested or how would it work?
Yeah, my, my, my understanding, Bahram, is that, so let's say, let's say that just round numbers, you had 100 students that, that had opted in for the testing at the high school. You know, you might have three testing days at the high school where a third of the students would be tested on each day. There would be a, a location designated in the school facility where the students would go. There would be trained medical personnel from the testing provider that were onsite at the location with a, with a basically a, a test kit that had already been pre-labeled for each of the, the participants. This is a saliva test. So, you know, you would do what you needed to do into the test tube, seal it up and be on your way. The results would be automatically uploaded into the system. And any positives would be automatically communicated to the school testing coordinator and of course, the student.
So just to clarify, it's not the one that goes up your nose.
It's not the one that goes, no, it's not the one that goes up your nose. Yeah. Yep. And it, but it is a PCR test. So, so it has the reliability that, you know, the relative reliability that, for which we're looking.
Um, this is both a question and a comment. One, I think it's really important for there to be discussions about the mental health of our students and of our staff and of our families. With that being said, you did mention that there are parent programs happening. Is there going to be any programs that specifically target to the students that could be helpful throughout a practical school day? Or just in general, when a student is going through a day besides having guidance counselors and SAC counselors, is there going to be anything that, that is directive towards the student more so than the people that are surrounded around that student?
Sure. You know, so our, our, it's a great question. So our presently, our approach to to addressing students is we've really been trying to focus on our teachers to focus on our students, right? So we've been identifying really the classroom as the primary setting within which we're providing sort of, you know, and I, I almost hesitate to use the word because it's, it's used so often. But to provide social emotional support in the classroom. And so, you know, what, what does that mean? Well, truthfully, you know, we, we got feedback early and often from our staff that they sort of needed help and guidance with, you know, what is that? Right? Like, what is social emotional learning? How do I support that in the classroom? And so part of that, that clearinghouse, which was put together by Ms. Butler and a lot of the resources and the training that she shared with staff members is to help, help teachers in the classroom create classroom environments that are more conducive to that. Now, that would be a point on which I'd be looking to get some feedback from the student liaisons, whether tonight or offline. Is, do you notice, as much as you can think back to what it was like before the pandemic, do you, do you notice adjustments in two ways? One, do you find that teachers are providing more opportunities in the class for just kind of conversation, you know, more informality, asking about the day, maybe even, you know, doing mindfulness exercises? And two, do you perceive that there's a little bit more flexibility and understanding when it comes to kind of deadlines and requirements? So those are two questions I would have for you. Do you see a difference?
So yes, there is a, I've seen the difference, definitely. The teachers are more understanding of a student's situation compared to prior years. And how a lot of the teachers are actually trying to take the time to actually speak with the students, see if there's anything wrong with them and try to help them the best they could. Still, that being said, I do think like, before you said, there's going to be a parent training seminar type thing. If we could just get something small for the students to like, learn how to cope with mental issues for themselves. Cause I had a friend of mine who literally had two breakdowns in one day, but didn't know how to deal with it. So they kind of laughed it off. Another friend who has like, his mental health has had an effect on his physical health. But he also just laughs it off. Like, we don't have a perfect way of having to deal with things. Like, we know what's wrong with us. We just don't know how to deal with it. So if there could be like a little small seminar, well, not like an assembly, but like some resources for students to know how to like calm down, relax, kind of get out of a very stressful situation.
Understood. And yeah, my word, I'll work on that.
Um, I agree to some extent with that. I will always have my reservations because I am a student. So I'm not going to sit up here and lie to any of you. It does vary from teacher to teacher. Teachers, some teachers are reluctant towards doing so, towards giving more understanding to the students where it's a situation of, you know, we've been doing this for years. Why does this have to change now? I don't have, I don't want to have to extend my care. And And no offense to those teachers, you know, they are commendable teachers because they have been teaching here for years. But I think it 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 has to go beyond that. Because some teachers are extremely reluctant, whether it is directive, like directly to the student or you just hear side conversations. And that just, I think, comes with like etiquette within the school buildings. We do hear, we do listen and we do notice the character change when it comes from student to student. There are some teachers who are practically known for acting differently from student to student. And 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 I think that's um, that's given, being that we are our own individuals, but I feel like there should be be a baseline character that a teacher has with all of their students, regardless of that student's behavior in the classroom or that student's work ethic. So in in plain terms, yes, but at the same time, a very much big no. Because there is still, and I understand we're still working towards a lot, but I don't think it's going to take, it it's going to have to be something that takes a few, a few more months or a few more years to really grind into the teachers, the teachers are already here. And for those who are going to be transferred into the school system, I am thankful for it. But at the same time, I think in reality of everything and being that we are still our own individuals, there needs to be a true conversation about it, more so than just providing seminars. Because there is that reluctance that I do see or that I do hear from my peers about that coming from some of these teachers.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, there's, you know, change is, change is challenging. You know, and and I think on the organizational side, in terms of, you know, how do we, you know, how do we help people, support people through this this second order change, right? Because I think, I think we're all slowly coming to the conclusion that it'll never be the way it was. And and that doesn't necessarily, that's not necessarily a bad thing, right? But it it it's, we're never going to go back. Right? And so I appreciate that. And I also recognize that there's a, there's a continuum. And, you know, people fall on that somewhere between uber supportive and maybe not so. But again, we have to do a better job of supporting people to help them make that change. But thank you for that. I appreciate it. And I made note of the student seminars and I will follow up with Ms. Butler and see what we can get up and running.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you both. We're glad you're here. You know, as Dr. Kascone said, there's a continuum and we we would hope that we get everybody where we want them to be sooner rather than later. But thank you for that inside and insight information. Ms. Huerta.
Thank you. And thank you for that feedback. I definitely think that these are things to take into consideration and to offer more informal opportunities to connect with the community, especially the student body and just make everyone feel comfortable to just be present and show up for each other and, you know, hear each other out. One thing, one idea that kind of came to my head mind when when the student liaisons were speaking, were possibly doing think tanks at the beginning of the school year when we did the think tank for the motto for the school. I thought that that was a really nice, it was informal. I don't know how much planning and time went into that, you know, how how difficult that was. But I think that that was a, you know, something along the lines that we might want to consider to do. And also going back to making, creating a chain of command, right? Oh, I'm sorry, chain of communication for the students as well, not just for the parents and the community, but for the students. You know, we already have counselors or, you know, maybe some of the liaisons kind of funneling it all back to one place that you can kind of bring all of those connections or, you know, missing pieces together. I think would be a good idea. One question I had about the testing, the COVID testing details. I know all of that is still not, you know, set in stone, but how would that cut into instructional time? I know that we're already pretty, you know, bombarded with a lot of, you know, aside from the school where regular day, there's a lot of logistical things that are going on with the lunches. And so, you know, I think those things to consider for instructional time. Or maybe how you said, Dr. Kascone, not having to go back to the way things were. But as part of our motto is reimagining what school looks like, what a school day is. I've had some conversations with certain parents, you know, there's some students are overwhelmed, not able to keep up with their homework or do a majority of their schoolwork in school, so they don't have to worry about it. So not all kids have the opportunity to be able to get their work done before they're even home. But just kind of restructuring maybe the days or how we're getting work done, not necessarily the way it used to be. I had a question, we already made, created a position for the COVID coordinator, that's already been filled, correct? They would be the ones that are working with the program?
The the, we hired a contact tracing specialist, which is a a part time staff member that would be responsible for presently, her responsibilities are really exclusively helping to manage the contact tracing. That being said, once we have an op, once we see how much of that staff member's time is occupied on a weekly basis with contact tracing, that might be an option for a person who could assist to some extent with the testing program, perhaps the backend management. I think the, each school would still need some sort of a staff member to be responsible for overseeing just the logistic operation of it, but certainly we could employ her on the backend to kind of, you know, with the enrollment and things of that nature.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Kascone. I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta. Ms. Marklinger?
Yeah, just, just to kind of follow up on the about students' social emotional wellness. Because I don't want to downplay the work that Ms. Butler has been doing for the district. And I think a lot of that is available online. And I know our guidance counselors are almost, you know, working diligently every day. So just kind of a follow up question would be if we were to offer. And and I've dealt with a lot of social emotional issues and mental health things. You can only do so much, right? So you can only offer programs, but what's the draw to make students attend? So while I think we do offer a lot within West Orange High School and our elementary schools, our middle schools, you can't force a student to attend. So what would, I'm just curious, you know, what would be something that would make a student feel, especially like friends that you're mentioning? What would help them to understand, like, this is the outlet for them, right? What would be the draw and how do we encourage students to? And this might be something Ms. Butler is already working on, but how do we get those students to attend? You know, I'm around student kids all the time, every day. And I definitely see what you're talking about where there's that hesitancy, you know, and the laughing it off. So what is it outside of, and I think some of the skills that Ms. Butler's programs are trying to do would help parents to do that. And I think our teachers and faculty are attempting to do that as well. Actually, a lot of the PD that Ms. Butler has been offering and I see a lot of the emails. So I see a lot of the courses that are being offered. But I'm just curious what from a student perspective would help and get them to engage in that and to attend. I think there's sometimes that stigma of I'm going to something that's for my mental health and I don't want people to know about it.
Well, that's sort of the issue in and of itself. Like, we understand that there are resources out there, but it's just the way to attain those resources is very difficult for many students. The reason that my friend had two panic attacks and didn't go to the teacher was because he didn't want to go into the whole be a bureaucracy.
Right, right.
Bureaucracy, thank you, thank you, thank you of it all. And that's a big fear for some students because some students grow up in a culture where mental health isn't the best thing for them or isn't the most important thing for them. Very difficult for them to speak up about it. And going to the guidance counselor or going to a teacher can involve the your mental health crisis going to your parents. And for a lot of students, that's not a viable option. So possibly some way that's more anonymous, less interaction and just like free pamphlets or just resources somehow. But some places like not guidance counselor oriented or teacher oriented.
Um, in regards to that, in 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 my personal experience, because, you know, everyone has their own struggles. I think the problem is where you would go talk to a guidance teacher or, I mean, sorry, guidance counselor or a teacher and next thing you know, you're coming home and your mom's like, hey, your teacher told me this, what's going on? And yes, parents are, do want to know what's going on with their child. And as most of you, I assume, have kids or are around a lot of kids. It's a scary thing to have a child and to not know what's going on in their lives. But in that same respect, I believe that there is some sort of privacy a child's allowed to. And I understand that also there's a lot of protocols that come into play when a child comes up with issues of depression and eating disorders and the sun and the third, but of just keeping it in that space, I think will create more of a security thing for the student where there's a trust, being able to be built between student, teacher, student, guidance counselor, student and just the board in general. From what I've known for the past few years, it's there's just, sorry, excuse me. There's been this kind of mistrust in the system that we have here. And I feel like in that way, bringing up the anonymous aspect, it would keep, it would, it would re, it would start a chain of trust again between student and said party, whoever that may be. So I understand that there are resources already there in place for students. But I think the problem is, one, just coming out about it is even harder within itself. And two, having that fear of said parent guardian or said students that may even hear about that, that's even scarier. So for most parts, most people won't say anything. They rather, you know, go to the bathroom or, you know, unintentionally skip class, things like that for their own mental health without realizing that, hey, you know, there are things out there to help you, but I don't really want everyone else knowing about that. So, yeah.
Makes sense. Thank you. Yeah, I just had a follow up question for Dr. Kascone. With the testing and in the end to end, what is the end goal? Like, what are we looking to accomplish by doing the testing? I'm I'm not saying whether it's right or wrong, but what is the end goal with it? Because we don't do testing for the flu, pneumonia, any other contagious diseases. So I'm just curious what the, what is the end goal here and how long do we perceive or expect this to continue?
Yeah, I mean, I I I'm, I'd be, I'm a little out of my depth on on, you know, on providing the rationale for that. I mean, I think that that's probably a better question for, you know, a physician or a public health director. And what I, what I can speak to is that the the State Department of Health put out guidelines very late in the summer indicating that, you know, if your community is at a certain level of transmission, moderate or higher, they recommended testing. Now, I might, as a layman, what I would say is that it it increases the chance that you can identify someone who may not necessarily be symptomatic, but is present, but is coming up positive. You know, but in reality, in order to explain the rationale for it, I wish I could do a better job. You know, and in terms of when, you know, any of this ultimately runs its course and, you know, I wish I had the answer to that as well. I what what I can say is that in the interim, until such time that we, you know, that that we are able to get it up and running. I mean, again, I think when we look at our, our, our case rate, you know, we've done really well.
And and to that point, you know, I know one of the arguments that was made back November of last year of why we were not going hybrid, why we're staying virtual is the safety concerns that our faculty had. That that definitely played into, I think, some of the decisions. So I have to say I'm a little surprised to see we're only at eighty percent when our community, I think, is at ninety something percent of being vaccinated. So that just, I'm curious if we, I know we're testing, is that that's a weekly basis and we're checking those?
Yeah, and we all, all staff members who are unvaccinated need to upload documentation of a negative case by the Friday of each week. And again, I would just reiterate that we haven't had an opportunity to disaggregate that data by of the number of of staff members who are not vaccinated. We have not disaggregated by certificated or non-certificated. We, you know, we've, it's been a lift ju- just really to get into compliance with the governor's order. But now that we are, we can start really looking at that data and understanding, you know, do we have a large number of those folks who are at a district substitutes? Are we seeing disproportionate numbers between non-certificated and certificated? Elementary versus high school? But we just haven't gotten that far yet. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marklinger and Mr. Rothstein.
First off, with regard to the the three part webinar on mental health for parents. The first session, I missed that. Was it recorded? Is it accessible?
It is. I actually, it's, I included the link in, it's on the school district's YouTube channel. But I also linked it in my community update. I believe that on the 12th, my November 12th update had the link to the recording.
Well, now you know, I didn't read that, that letter.
That's okay, Mr. Rothstein. I won't take it personally.
That's okay. I will get caught up. And then are the dates set for the remaining two or are they still to be set?
Yes, the January 18th and March 16th.
Thank you both.
And I'll be sure and, you know, whether it's those or the ones that are being offered through the student counseling department, be sure to include those in those Friday updates.
I'll be sure to read them. And then one more question with regard to the district security project. So is that completed the 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 spending that we were planning to do to date? Is that, is that?
Correct. We're, we're, we're really just in a punch list phase at this point in time. But the, we are largely through those funds that we had, we had received for that purpose, which were mostly through the state security grants.
Really so pleased to to hear that and yeah, just so unfortunately so important.
It's been a long time coming, Mr. Rothstein, primarily because, and and I say this not in a disparaging way because I know that, you know, the pandemic disrupted a lot of things, but I think the state was a little bit, quite a bit delayed in when they were able to get those monies out, which really set the project back. But we're, we're, we're almost done at this point.
Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Sunakle.
Thank you, President Trick Scales. I guess the two, I just wanted a question on the security, the two way communication video raptor and the raptor visitor ID. Does the raptor visitor ID and I didn't, it didn't occur to me before that, does it actually scan and give you a report? Like, so if you're not, if you show up on the sex offenders list that you're not letting the building? Is it that quick or is it?
Yeah, no, it's, I mean, if it's a license, you get, you get, you get those, those flags.
Really?
Yeah.
So the security guard gets that or it comes up on the?
Whoever, whoever is monitoring the, you know, the the software.
Oh, okay.
In some cases, the security guard, in some cases, it's, you know, a main office administrator assistant who's monitoring the camera.
Oh, wow. That didn't occur to me that when you put your license in that, that's what happened. So, but that's good. So.
That's part of the proprietary software that Raptor has.
Yeah, oh, that's great. And then as far as the emergency communications and for the devices that are going home, we talked about if we had to go, are the students, those fifteen hundred devices coming in and being distributed to students immediately? So they will have them. So these are the kids that don't have them currently.
Of the ones we, you know, we received the survey responses at the beginning of the year.
Got it.
And so the technology department will receive them, set them up, image them, do anything that needs to do with them, contact people for pickup and they'll have a brand spanking new Chromebook.
Oh, great. Okay, that's wonderful. And then the other question I had, I really do appreciate all the discussion and hearing from our students about. um, I really do appreciate all the discussion and hearing from our students about some of the mental health issues, and I I seem to recall, and I may be confusing this with something else, but did we, were we setting aside a space in the high school for sort of like a meditation room, or some sort of a, a space where students can gather and collect themselves? Did that happen?
There's, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So, um, I just hadn't remembered about.
Well, it's, 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 um, it's, 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 um, connected to, it's real, it's really a part of what, what used to be the ISS, the in-school suspension room.
Okay.
And it's used in that suite for, you know, basically restorative practices.
Okay.
So it's not a, I don't believe it's a space that's open to the student population to use, but rather it's a space for de-escalating and for, um, you know, for, for restorative practices for students ordinarily, who's been sitting in an ISS room, you know, staring at a wall for eight hours.
Oh, okay. So, um, one of the things we have at the school where I work, um, in higher ed is a sort of a meditation, they call it a meditation room, but it's for anyone who needs to pray regularly during the day, or a place to just quietly go and have, you know, sort of give yourself a timeout. And I know, I know space is tight, but it might be something, given what the students have been saying, that, you know, maybe there's a need for just a, a place where somebody could go and collect themselves. And again, this goes to how we might have to do things differently going forward. Um, that it's, it's a way for them to just kind of pull themselves together if they're getting stressed or having anxiety and need a space to just kind of calmly collect themselves, meditate for a little bit, and then they can get going back to class.
I, I, I appreciate that. So Barum was, he dropped the mask, so he was.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, sorry. But, yeah, um, like a meditation room of some sort, something for like, say, students who need to do like prayer, uh, for their specific religion, or for just calms them down, or students who just need to take a deep breath and relax and get themselves together, because there are students who really do need that. Um, we're students, but we're also human beings in a very different societies when we left school.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and if we realize that, I feel like we can help students a lot more than we currently do. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And um, I'm going to take the liberty of uh, conveying congratulations to our Vice President Ten, Ten, Ten Jenny Cliff. Jen Honey Cliff, as she has completed all of the mandatory, necessary, and required training by New Jersey School Boards Association, and has been granted the new board member boardsmanship certification. And so what that really means is that um, you have earned a minimum of ten credits through attendance at academy sessions. Um, you've attended two School Board Association annual workshops and a variety of county programs. So I welcome you to the club.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Okay, and we're now going to move on to questions from the public on agenda items. Um, Ms. Flowers, do you have questions on our Google form?
Not for agenda items.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. So moving right along, we're up to reports, discussions, and recommendations. And I'm going to call for a motion for personnel items. One through five, attachment two, and B, curriculum and instruction items, one and two, attachment three. And we do have a correction on page five. Or if you will note, or the new nurse at Gregory School, that should read school nurse as opposed to registered nurse. So if you would make that correction. So is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President Tony Cliff. Is there a second?
Yes, seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Rothstein. Any discussion?
I had a question, I believe.
Uh, Ms. Werter?
Yes, I believe I emailed Dr. Kasten about this question, and he said that he would address it at the. Um, so I believe it is section, page seven. Section five.
What's your question?
So I asked if it was a new or revised, and how does that um, impact the sali- like, how does it impact the salary guide? Does it impact the salary guide, and does it impact the budget?
So that's the, the job description attachment to job description reading specialist instructional literacy coach, the revised one?
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Kasten?
Okay, thank you for that question, Ms. Werter. Um, so, right, so what we have on the agenda tonight is a revised job description. This, um, this job description already was already a board-approved job description. There is a revision to include um, aspects of instructional coaching. Um, this job description is being um, included and revised because um, in the aforementioned ARP grant, which will be submitted this week, one of the proposed expenditures in the grant is to fund a reading specialist for the next two years out of the grant. Now presently, we have six reading specialists employed in the district. The only school that presently does not have a reading specialist is St. Cloud. Now, um, last year, um, though the needs began to increase, we were able to compensate because we were delivering reading instruction virtually. So we were able to really uh, leverage our staff to a greater extent, rather than if they had to go from building to building. The need has certainly not decreased this year, um, and it really raised the need to have a dedicated reading specialist at St. Cloud School. Now, if you're wondering to yourself, well, what happens after two years? Um, does that mean then that that position has to be absorbed into the local budget? And the answer to that question would be, yes, should we continue to need it? What do I mean by that? Our ultimate goal uh, for our reading specialists is that we start to utilize them to a greater degree in an instructional coaching mo- model, and less in a one-to-one uh, student service model. How would we be able to accomplish that? Well, one of the end game results of that instructional coaching model is to continue to build capacity of classroom teachers to be able to more effectively deliver multisensory reading instruction to students. Additionally, as we work on the modification and the reformation of our BSI program to align it more closely to a best practices, research-based response to intervention program, what that theoretically means is, is that we should be sending less kids to reading specialists to service. Meaning that, ideally, after two years, we actually won't need the additional one. We'll be able to meet the needs of all seven elementary schools with just the six sharing. Um, and we would not need to absorb that reading specialist into the local budget two years from now.
Okay. So currently, you said all schools do have at least one?
Correct.
Okay. That's a lot.
I know.
Thank you.
I know, that's why.
Yes, the email.
I didn't put it in the email.
But thank you for the clarification.
And, and Ms. Werter, um, if, if you ever had any, you know, of course, I'm always willing to have follow-ups, or any board members, if you had additional questions about that, I'm happy to, to chat with you.
Thank you.
Ms. Merklinger?
Yeah, I just actually have a follow-up question. Um, I want to sum our lines to, um, what Melinda was saying. Um, and, and I might be wrong about this, but I believe in my first year, we already had coaches, and we switched to reading specialists, and now it sounds like we're going back to having coaches. Is that? Am I understanding that correctly?
You, you're not entirely off-base, but let me clarify. Let me clarify. So the budget cycle prior to my arrival, if you recall, there was a proposal to cut reading specialists from the budget.
Right.
And people weren't happy about that. Um, so the district had to find a way to sort of walk that back. And the way they did that was by using Title II funding to partially fund the salary of the reading specialist. But that would only um, work if the reading specialist was engaging in some degree of coaching responsibilities. And they have, they have. Um, but the model hasn't, hasn't shifted the extent to which we would have wanted it to, and part of the reason is the pandemic. But that is, that continues to be the goal that the reading specialist, so let's call it fifty-fifty. Fifty percent of the time, one-on-one with students, fifty percent of the time pushing in, doing, doing coaching. But you're not, you're, you're not entirely, you, 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 yeah, you got it. There was something there.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's been a long three years, but.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? There being none. Mrs. Flowers, vote please.
Mrs. Werter?
Yes.
Ms. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tony Cliff?
Yes.
President Trick Scales?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that moves us on to finance, and I would like to um, entertain a motion to table an item. Item number eight. Is there a motion to table item under eight, under finance?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Tony Cliff, and that is a approval of a settlement agreement. All right, so, uh, may I have a motion to approve finance?
I'm sorry, do we have a second for the?
Oh, I'm sorry. What was the second?
I'll second.
Ms. Werter?
Thank you.
So may I have a motion to approve finance, A, special services, and B, uh, special services, item one, and business office items one through nine, with the exception of number eight, and that would include attachments four through eight.
Uh, yes, so moved.
Thank you, Mr. Rothstein. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Werter. And I noticed we do have a donation, so thank you to Blackboard uh, forty. Where did I see it?
Uh, yes, forty dollars.
Drop of page nine. There it is, forty dollars, um, to West Orange High School. So thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, so, um.
I'm sorry.
Any?
I was, is that a procedural question?
Yes.
Do we need to actually, do we need to vote on tabling item eight, or is it?
Oh, we, we do. Yes.
I, I was going to take, yes, thank you for calling that out.
Yes, okay. So we'll take the vote on.
So we can do it at the same time, if you'd like.
Oh, okay.
Vote, we can vote on
Both.
both of them, realizing that we're acknowledging that we're voting to move all items and tabling number eight.
Okay, great. All right, so would you do that for us, please, Ms. Flowers?
Okay. Uh, vote for both motions, uh, to accept all items and table number eight. Mrs. Werter?
Yes.
Ms., Ms. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tony Cliff?
Yes.
President Trick Scales?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we're up to, I think, reports.
Yes.
And uh, let's take a look at, um, I think we were doing something, uh. Okay, let's just do reports, items one and two. Is there a motion to approve reports, items one and two?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President Tony Cliff. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Werter. Uh, any discussion on these items? There being none, Mrs. Flowers, please.
Mrs. Werter?
Yes.
Ms. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tony Cliff?
Yes.
President Trick Scales?
Yes. And now I'm going to call for a motion to table E miscellaneous item one, which is the recommendation to approve a uniform state memorandum of agreement between education and law enforcement officials, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Is there a motion to table that item?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President Tony Cliff. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Werter. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Flowers, a vote please.
Mrs. Werter?
Yes.
Ms. Merklinger?
We're voting to table it.
Table the uniform now. Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tony Cliff?
Yes.
President Trick Scales?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that brings us up to petitions and hearings of citizens. Uh, there being none on the floor, um, what do we have from Google Forms, Ms. Flowers or Dr. Kasten?
What I, what I would suggest, Ms. Flowers, because they all seem to be related to the same topic, is just read them all into the record. Read them all into the record, and then I'll respond singularly to all, because they're all essentially the same question.
Okay. So we have four submissions in the Google form. Our first one is from, and forgive me if I pronounced the name incorrectly. Uh, first one is from Andrea Tralambos, address thirteen ninety-one Pleasant Valley Way. Questions and comments. Allow field trips to happen, especially for school programs like IH and IMS. Not to mention for some trips, vaccines shouldn't be required as some kids don't have the choice in whether they get it or not. Second submission is from Osri Howard, thirteen ninety-five Pleasant Valley Way. I think the district could put more effort into making field trips available for students in special programs. Field trips are a very enriching part of a student's learning experience, and although COVID has made this protocol for certain things tougher this year, the school has shown no effort to make it possible anyway. Third submission is from Maya Kooks, three hundred St. Cloud Avenue. In the matter of field trips for West Orange High School students enrolled in the Institute for the Humanities Program, we are so lucky to be in such close proximity to one of the most culturally rich cities in the world, New York City. Trips in New York's art and cultural institutions are an integral part of this program, but they have been put on hold due to the COVID vaccine mandate required by New York City. Our students are all eligible for the vaccine. Why are they not being allowed to participate in the field trips to New York? If students aren't vaccinated, they don't have to attend the field trips and can be provided a virtual field trip opportunity. As it stands now, that's what all the students are being offered. I've been told by school staff that the plans, the plan is to hold off on in-person field trips until all students are able to attend. Are we waiting for New York City to drop the vaccine mandate? Are we waiting for New Jersey to require vaccines for all students? I would respectfully like to know what your timeline is for re-examining this policy of not allowing IH field trips. What is your criteria for determining when the field trips will resume? What happens if those criteria aren't met and the students continue to be denied this opportunity? Our students missed eighteen months of in-person school. We are so happy to have them back. We cannot continue to deny them the end of it, the invaluable educational opportunities that are available to them outside school walls. Thank you for your time and for the opportunity to voice my concerns. Maya Kooks. And final submission is from Eleanor Kooks, three hundred St. Cloud Avenue. I am a student in the IH program, and I'm writing to inquire about field trips out of state. My friends and I all feel it is an integral experience in the Institute of Humanities. I have heard vaccination is an issue, but ninety-nine percent of us are double vaccinated. Even if New York trips are out of question due to their vaccination mandate, in-state, in-state field trips should not be put off the table. All of us IH students appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers. Um, you know, I was, when I read these, um, I was, I was a touch caught off-guard. I'm assuming that there's some, some form of a backstory to this, which I'm not currently aware. Um, my position, you know, as communicated, and if you were to refer to. My position, you know, as communicated, and if you were to refer to the Frequently Asked Question document for school reopening that was put out in the beginning of the year, was that, you know, we're not disallowing field trips. Rather, certainly on the central office level, we would, we would examine every field trip, you know, relative to its location and understand, you know, if we felt that this was a trip that could be safely accomplished. And, you know, without being particularly stringent. So I've made a, I've made a note to myself to add this to the next principal meeting agendas. I can tell you, and I'm happy to say in public as the superintendent, we, we, we want field trips to happen, if they can, and if they could be done safely. In terms of New York City field trips, you know, understanding the vaccine mandate. Well, you know, if there's a trip that goes to the city and, and, you know, students would need to demonstrate proof of vaccination and, you know, and if it was a personal choice to not get the vaccine, then I would imagine that they would understand that they wouldn't have that opportunity available to them. If they really wanted to go on the trip that badly, well, then maybe they would consider getting the vaccine. It would be a personal choice either way. But I can assure you that I will follow up with this and understand where this may be coming from and that we certainly intend to support field trips wherever and whenever we can. Oh, and by the way, for anyone that raised the question here, if you're interested in perhaps emailing me and providing me with some more specific information that might help me be a little bit more specific and targeted in my research, that would be appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Keston. And now reports from the board. Ms. Huerta?
Thank you, President Trix Skills. I have nothing to report for the P R. We just received something from President Trix Skills a little bit earlier this evening. So the P R committee has not met since August. The next forum that the School Board Association will be offering is the Fall School Law Forum, and that will be tomorrow, nine a.m. to four p.m. virtual. And it's for three Board Academy credits and a C L E credit, seven point two C L E credits, and a statewide regional P D credit. There will also be the workshop for the, the workshop that we all just did, that is still available on the website, N J School Boards until December twenty-eighth. The other workshop that is available, more like, most likely for the newer board members who will be in, in January, three Rs, roles, responsibilities, and resources. However, we as well can participate in that training. The Legislative Committee meeting will be virtual Saturday, December eleventh, from nine a.m. to twelve. And our next X County School Board meeting will be virtual, and that will be January twelfth, six forty-five in the evening to nine p.m. And the topic will be school funding and facilities. I just wanted to make a few comments about the Laramie Project. I was able to attend with Dr. Keston for the dress rehearsal night, and it was really just very inspiring to see the students participate in that project. And I feel like it's a great starting point. And I hope to have more engaging conversations about, about that. I think that at the end of the play, that is one of the asks, right, is that we keep making that conversation and just keep coming together to have those talks and ask the hard questions and, you know, come out and be comfortable with saying how we feel and addressing those things. High school band concert, I got a little sneak peek. I happened to be in the building the evening that they were here doing their performance, and they looked amazing. I'm always in awe of like the fashion that comes out at these concerts. And I look forward to the middle school concerts that will be coming up. W O S E P A C is having their first meeting of the year, Tuesday, November twenty-third. That's tomorrow. And it's on Zoom from seven to nine p.m. You have to email W O S E P A C, W O S E P A C at gmail dot com for the Zoom link. And just congratulations to Tabira Barhanu on her book, My Uncle is an Alien. I know she was on our West Orange Public School page, reading to the Kelly, Kelly or Hazel School, one of the elementary schools. Kelly, okay. Which is also, Kelly is featured in the book, so that was, that was really nice. I haven't gotten the book yet, but I did order it when I got reminded that it was on the, based on the Facebook page. And just wishing the wrestling, hockey, and any other sports teams that are, you know, starting up their season. I know some people have started training already, and I'm just looking forward to it. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta. Ms. Merklinger?
Thank you. So we're in the process of planning a town council, a meeting with the town council liaison, so that'll be upcoming to wrap up the year. In terms of things that are coming up, I just want to recognize Gregory School had their Eagle Fun Run. It looked like from the pictures that I saw that it was a really fun event. I know my cheerleaders came into practice all boasting about how many laps they each ran. Some ran like forty-five laps around Gregory School's field. So congrats to everyone that participated in that event. I know there's a lot of events coming up. Unfortunately, I did miss the band concert, but I know there's a lot more coming up with our middle schools, bands, choir, chorus, a lot of great things going on. Our winter sports are all starting up, and I think our winter color guard is actually starting up as well. So best of luck to all of those, to all of our teams. Our West Orange cheer team has their competitions to qualify for nationals on December fourth, so looking forward to that. The Air Force, our junior ROTC had their induction ceremony, so I got to see some of that. And they also, for anyone that didn't know, there was a Black Hawk that left, landed on forty field. So that's pretty neat that we got to have the junior, the Air Force Junior ROTC program got to experience that as well as their drill competition, so congratulations. There's also a Toys for Tots, the Charles family holding their annual Toys for Tots Tonight with Santa event on December fourteenth. It's a great community event, and this year it's actually at Turtleback Zoo instead of at four sixty-six. But, so that should be a really fun event. And also just on a community basis, it is Movember for men's health, so just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. I know Perry Bashkov runs a West Orange community page, so anyone that would like to donate towards that cause that is available, you can find it online. And I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, especially to those who can't be with their families, our military troops that are overseas, and everyone that's traveling or not able to be with their families, but wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving and everyone enjoys some time off.
Thank you, Ms. Merklinger. Mr. Rothstein?
Thank you. On the policy front, board members, more policies coming. So we have a few more that will urgently need to be adopted, and so we'll be in communication after Thanksgiving, I think is fair to say. But, but more policies to read, and we'll coordinate on getting those on the agenda. And then also, I just, I brought my, my program from the Laramie Project just as a reminder to say thank you to Mrs. Mapes and to the entire team that put it together and all of the students. What a, what an incredible experience and really, really a very, I think, brave play to put on. It was so emotionally charged and yet not overwhelming and important. And I'm just so pleased that I was able to be there in the audience and experience that. So thank you all for your work on that play.
Thank you, Mr. Rothstein, and Vice President Tony Cliff.
Thank you, President Trix Skills. So we're in lame duck season down in Trenton, and I wanted to give you all a couple of highlights. So on the environment and energy, we have a bill that is supported by the New Jersey School Boards for Electric School Bus Pilot Program, which is in the Senate at number four zero seven seven. This will create a three-year pilot program to determine operational reliability and cost effectiveness of replacing the diesel buses with electric school buses. And the New Jersey Economic Development Authority will award a fifteen million dollars annually to six school districts for this to participate in this pilot program. And along with that, they've also, in the Senate, Bill Number Two Two Eight, and in the Assembly, it's sixteen twenty-six, would have the New Jersey Economic Development Authority administer a loan program. So this would be a loan program for the electric buses. So the bill passed in the Senate back in March twenty twenty, and New Jersey School Boards supports this legislation. In the Assembly Appropriations Committee, there is a report, a reporting discipline data that is Assembly one one eight four, Assembly four four one four, and Senate ten twenty bill numbers. And this would require the school report card to include a demographic breakdown of students who receive disciplinary actions and requires the Commissioner of Education to establish a statewide database concerning various disciplinary actions. So this consolidated bill would require that there be a demographic breakdown by race, gender, disability, and grade level of the students who receive discipline, as well as the types of discipline imposed. And now this bill is heading off to the Assembly for considerations. So, and those are the highlights on the legislative side. And I, just on a personal note, I wanted to say, and thank everybody involved with the Laramie Project. It was a wonderful production and certainly echo the comments of my colleagues who also saw it. I'm glad that West Orange High School is producing this type of work. It's really important and was delighted to be able to participate as an audience member. And also wanted to just mention that coming up on December ninth is the Jubilee Choir. And if you have not seen the Jubilee Choir, they are fantastic. And it's a really energetic, usually a really energetic performance and really gives me a sense of joy, so I hope everyone can come out and support our Jubilee Choir on December ninth. And that's all for me. Oh, oh, it's the whole chorus, sorry. Thank you. So I stand corrected. It's the full, it's five different choruses. So thank you.
Wow, I just think West Orange is a great place to learn. I mean, it's, I just, you started out saying blown away. And I have a friend who is a veteran educator administrator. She lives here in West Orange. She's worked in a whole lot of places. Her kids graduated from the high school a long time ago. And she just said to me, she cannot believe the quality of program, programming that we offer here at West Orange High School as compared to other, other high schools in the area. I mean, we, we have something for everyone, and if we don't, you tell us and we'll make it happen. So I, I just, I'm feeling pretty proud. Ms. Merklinger and I have one more month left on the board, so we have two meetings left after we, after I hit the gavel tonight. And so I'm just feeling like really proud. So anyway, the public relations, I did get that memo out to Ms. Merklinger and Ms. Huerta. And the last item said, did I forget anything? And I did. I forgot the chain of communication. So please add that to your action plan list, and we got that action plan, action plan courtesy of Charlene from School Boards. Just want to put the little policies report from Mr. Rothstein in a greater context. Everything is done, so what's left is those policies that were updated in the meantime while we were approving everything else. So our task is really, really done. We're just now going back and cleaning up a few things. So I know we told the public we were done, so I didn't want them thinking, oh, now they're not done. So we really are. We just have some housekeeping to do, would you say, Dr. Keston?
President Trix Skills, I'm making analogy. So when you, when you do a doctoral degree, when you defend, following your oral defense, you're doctor, but you still have to finish the manuscript.
Right.
So that's kind of where we are.
It's the punch list.
That's right.
It's after you've had your house done, and they give you the little blue stickies to put on the wall. So that's what we're doing. We're doing the punch list now. All right, and I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving to all and happy Hanukkah. I think Hanukkah is coming up before we meet again. So happy Hanukkah to all of our celebrating families and staff and community. And thank you to our staff who make all things possible for us. And I'd like to call for a, well, our next board meeting is actually going to be held on December sixth at seven thirty p.m. right here at West Orange High School. And now I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Ms. Huerta. Might there be a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Vice President. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and this meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and good night.